Good evening, welcome to the June twenty fifth Township of Falls Planning Commission Meeting, please salute the flag. Mr. Britney, take the roll, please.
Mr. O'Brien.
Present.
Mr. Hartzell.
Present.
Mr. Everett.
Present.
Mr. Anderson.
Present.
I am present, Mr. Haney.
Present.
Okay, we have a forum.
All right, item number one on the agenda is My Lane One LLC, My Lane, Mooresville, PA, one nine zero three zero, TNP number thirteen dash zero two eight dash zero seven five dash zero zero three, preliminary and final land development.
Good evening, Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin here on behalf of My Lane One LLC. The TNP number is thirteen twenty eight seventy five double oh three, you can see the location of the site on the plan that Mr. Richardson from DUMAC Engineering prepared, it is at the intersection of Route one and Route thirteen. Mike DiNardo is with me this evening as well, Mike DiNardo acquired the property back in twenty twenty-two along with Eighty My Lane, which is the home of the catering hall in the township, so he owns both this property and the adjacent property, and then I would submit and we'll discuss this as part of the application, there are no other really pertinent adjoining or adjacent properties to the property that we're here to discuss this evening. I want to state at the outset here, this might end up being a little bit repetitive if anyone in the Planning Commission either attended the Supervisors Meeting back in twenty twenty-two, Mike came in front of the Supervisors and discussed his use with an airburner's representative at that time, and then we did a presentation at the Zoning Hearing Board in twenty twenty-three, so if anybody, again, was present for either of those, we're going to cover a lot of the same ground because the nature of this use is probably a little unique as compared to what you're used to here. The subject property is approximately four and a quarter acres, it is located in the light industrial zoning district, we have proposed a phased development for what we've labeled, what's in your packet, as a biochar operation. Phase two depicts the construction of a twenty thousand square foot building where we're anticipating this site will have approximately five to seven full-time employees. Mike's going to go into this in much greater detail in a moment, but again, I want to state at the outset that this operation has nothing to do with mulch, it is a way to deal with green waste, this is compatible as a, it's not an accessory use, but it's compatible with Mike's existing business, he runs Shades of Green, if anyone here is familiar with that operation, Mike is a certified arborist, he's very familiar with this business and the entire industry, and biochar, which I was not particularly familiar with before Mike had contacted us a couple of years ago, what's being proposed is essentially a green energy solution to burn up to approximately fifteen tons of wood and landscape materials an hour, it's an alternative essentially from taking a lot of product, and again, primarily wood, to a landfill or other landscape material to a mulching operation, which is worse for energy consumption. As I stated, the application says biochar, and that's what this creates, but it's a clean carbon ash which can be used to supplement soils and things like rain gardens, they utilize something called airburner equipment, which is, again, what I referenced, there was a representative who addressed the Supervisors two years ago on this, but FEMA has designated, this equipment is basically, they've labeled it the best available control technology for disaster cleanup, it's been tested by the US EPA Forest Service, DEP, and the US Armed Forces. Mike and John, as well as Heath DUMAC, have been working with the township and township consultants, had a meeting with Rich DePaulito, want to make sure that everything with this operation is being done safely and done appropriately, we will continue to do that as part of this process as we go forward with the approval process and the subsequent, hopefully, to the approval process, those conversations will be ongoing. The septic, which I know is always a concern, has been tested and it meets requirements, there is no noise, there is no smoke, there is no nuisance associated with this operation. Again, we think this is a appropriate use for this site, it is zoned light industrial, it improves a vacant property, property has currently approximately forty percent impervious surface coverage with no stormwater controls, we think that the historic operation at least some point was utilizing this property as a staging area, we will be improving the stormwater management post-development as compared to the current existing conditions as a result of the onsite impervious surface ratios, this is going to be managed properly, I would say even more than normally, there is an incentive on Mr. DiNardo's part to make sure that this business operates correctly, given the fact that the adjacent property is also the property for which he's the landlord and which he manages and which there's a commercial tenant operation ongoing. What I'm going to suggest is, Mr. Richardson, come up, go through the site plan briefly, Mike's going to give background about what this is, how this would function on a day-to-day basis, things like fire control, fire prevention mechanisms, and then certainly, I'm sure there will be some questions about this, and we're happy to go through them with the Planning Commission before we address any of the waivers that we're seeking this evening, so, thank you.
Good evening, John Richardson from DUMAC Engineering, I would just like to do a brief summary of the plan and what we're proposing, the current proposal would be the property would be developed in two phases, here on the screen is the summation of the two phases, it would include access through the banquet property to a parking lot for use of a proposed warehouse building, and then this area of the site would be utilized for the manufacturing of the biochar and storage, as Mr. McGinnis said, we're located along Route one and Route thirteen, there's currently a fairly substantial drainage feature that comes along through here and runs along and then enters Rock Run, which runs through here, the site's a little unusual, the high point is right along the water course that runs along the off-ramp on Route thirteen, the rest of the site drains back towards Rock Run, so through our site and through the banquet site in front of us, as part of the development, all stormwater would be put in during phase one. Phase one is represented here, so we have a stone dry well that would be located underground, that would be put in in the initial phase, which would also include a scale house, two parking spots, and obviously the biochar facility, so that way the site would have the full stormwater controls that it would have at the end of phase two constructed at the very beginning. And once again, here's, here's a image of phase two, so phase two would compose of the building itself, the remainder of the scale house, septic system, and the parking lot. Sorry, the computer's a little laggy. As part of the project, we would be planting evergreens along the property line, and we would be providing parking lot trees around the proposed parking that would be created during phase two. The site has been designed from a stormwater management standpoint to provide the full controls as required by Falls Township ordinances and by the requirements of the MPDS. We have conducted soil tests on the site, and the site is conducive to infiltration for the stormwater, additionally, my firm has designed the septic system that has also been tested and witnessed by the Bucks County Health Department, and has been designed at this point, the approval for that septic is more formality than anything else. I believe that's all I have.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here tonight, my name is Michael DiNardo, the applicant, I'm sorry, I don't have copies, I do have some handouts, if anyone would like to see what this operation's going to look like, the equipment we utilize, and some diagrams, does anybody want to see anything?
Yes, please.
Could bring them up?
Yes. Yeah. Thank you.
So, this operation is going to consist basically taking wood waste, green waste, vegetation, vegetative waste, but specifically wood, stumps, pieces of, let's say, debris that are too big to typically go to a mulch grinder, we're actually going to burn it in a controlled manner in a piece of equipment called an airburner, that airburner has a manifold on it, which is called an air curtain, so as that fire's burning, it's actually going to keep smoke from exiting the top of the unit, and it's going to burn that smoke, so you don't really get any smoke release at all, occasionally, when you load the machine, you're going to break that air curtain, and you'll get smoke for a few seconds, but all you're really going to see is some heat waves coming off the top of it, it's a very quiet operation, it's not a dusty operation, it's very safe because the container is not that big, the fire's never going to get out of the box, and if it were to, we're going to have water to take care of that, but we're also going to have piles of dirt or sand or whatever, we could just put the fire out, we could just suffocate it in a matter of minutes. The process also reduces the volume of waste by as much as ninety-eight percent, so you put a hundred tons of stumps and wood, not at one time, but during the course of days, and you're going to reduce that amount by volume by as much as ninety-eight percent, so you're left with two tons, so it's a very efficient process, and then that ash and that carbon that's remaining at the bottom of the unit would get cleaned out as needed, and we are going to add that to soil piles and then ship it out to people who want to improve their soil, use it as a fertilizer, biochar, there's been plenty of studies on it, it's becoming a popular product, it increases microbial activity, which is beneficial to the soil, basically builds good soil health, it actually helps retain water, it actually helps retain nutrients if you add them, or actually helps not add too much fertilizer because it actually improves the soil that much, there's been studies that say crop yields have increased as much as twenty percent or more, and even more than that in poor soil areas, it actually reduces leaching as well, too, so we have a problem with runoff from fertilizers, so it binds well to the soil and keeps nutrients where they should be, it's a, it's a very carbon neutral process, meaning it's not going to be producing a lot of greenhouse gas, and when we add it back to the soil for plants and trees to absorb, it becomes carbon negative, it's a really good thing, it's popular, it actually actually, it also actually increases soil pH, so soil levels typically around here are very acidic, so it's actually going to increase the soil pH to be a beneficial growing medium for plants and gardens.
Mike, if I can get you to add just two, two things, topically speaking, one, once the site is operational, what is, what is that, sorry, what, what is that going to look like for somebody who wants to, just like a day-to-day rundown of what this site will look like, so someone who wants to come to the property and make benefit of this, what do they do, and then secondly, made reference to meeting, from a fire standpoint, there's a couple of comments, and just discuss what your plan is, and just give a little more detail there.
So, day-to-day, if someone wanted to come in and offload some wood waste, they'd stop in, jump on the scale, there'll be an office trailer, then they'll be directed to a pile where we put raw material, there'll be separated, you know, logs, brush, branches, we're not going to be accepting wood chips because wood chips don't burn, they actually just smother, and we don't want wood chips, we're not making mulch, there'll be a unit set up, and there'll be an excavator and a wheel loader to process the material, meaning bringing it closer to the unit to be put inside the burn box, big pieces will be sheared with an excavator, made smaller, not into tiny pieces, but it'll be broken down so it burns more efficient, and if somebody wants to buy the biochar ash as it is, they could just, we can load them up and get it out of there. As far as a fire standpoint, we did meet with the Fire Marshal two weeks ago, my engineer and I, and we're talking about a well and possibly a large water tank for volume, so we have, DUMAC Engineering, working with someone else who's going to design a plan, and we're going to consult with the Fire Marshal and make sure he agrees with everything we're doing, and that should handle the fire protection part of it. The piles of raw material sitting there, when I say raw material, is logs, trees, debris, stuff like that, they're flammable, I mean, everything's flammable, but they're not going to spontaneously combust like mulch or wood chips would do, they're not giving off heat, they're just sitting there, if someone were to intentionally set a fire, well, that's, that could happen, I can't prevent that, but hopefully that never does happen, but when you have wood chips, leaves, compost, mulch sitting there, that's giving off heat, producing methane gas, I mean, they technically flare up when you don't want them to, so the Fire Marshal agreed with that as well, he just wants to know what happens when there is a fire, and we're going to have enough water for him to hopefully never have to deal with it, but.
What about access, because you have a one-way-in over a small bridge, and you've got to come under a tunnel, so are you looking to add any more egress for the Fire Department? Or yard hydrants from that water tank?
So, as far as egress, I don't think there is a possible way, Fire Marshal's been through that tunnel before, so he says he can get his vehicles through there, hydrants and a tank, definitely, yes.
Will the, do the units, the burn units, or they, will they be burning unattended at any time?
No.
And will they cool down sufficiently before the, I mean, will, how long do they retain the heat, I guess?
Well, I mean, you start the fire in the morning, let's say, traditionally, like you would do a regular campfire or even a fire in a fireplace, you know, you'd build it like a log cabin, close the door, then there's a little access panel, panel where you can actually ignite the fire, once it's going and the wind, you know, the air curtain's blowing air on it, then you can add wood to it, it's going to be a little trial and error initially, but I think, you know, we get to a point where we stop adding wood at a certain time, we know that by the time the day's over, you have mostly ash left in the bottom of the box.
How are these things impacted by, like, high winds or rain or?
Well, if it's raining, we're not going to do it because it's inefficient, I mean, if it's a really windy day, we might decide not to do it as well, you know, but just have to use our common sense to go out there and.
And it appears, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, after you're done, the raw material's going to be, the finished product, the biochar is going to be stored outside?
Correct.
And is that, like, light enough to blow out into the road?
No, because it's going to be wood ash and that biochar, so it's going to be a combination, it's not just going to be pure ash, which, when it's very dry, can be, you know, blown around in the wind, but we also have a warehouse, at some point, we're probably going to even maybe bag this stuff or put a cover on the bin that's going to, you know, house it for the beginning, so, again, we're not going to try to operate on windy days, we're definitely not going to have a fire, we want, we don't want a fire to get out of control, but again, that curtain does blow air down, so the fire's really not coming out of the box, those flames are below the top of that unit, I visited a site a few months ago up in Salersburg, PA, same machine, and I didn't even know it was running when I got there until I got, you know, within ten feet of it, I could see the heat waves, so it's a really clean operation, there's a lot of videos online, and you can always look that up if you wanted to see it, actually, burning.
And phase one versus phase two, what's phase one look like versus phase two?
So, phase one would just, you know, do the improvements to the property, stormwater management, obviously, fire protection, and then operating, and then a year or two, a year, year to, to a year and a half after that, I'd like to put phase two, which would be build the warehouse.
So, it shows that the septic system's going to be built in phase two, what are you going to do for two years?
Well, if we have to get a porta potty, but is the septic John phase two? Okay, so, you know, porta potty, I mean, it's not going to have that many employees from the beginning.
What's your warehouse proposed to be, like, helpful, you got storm, storm material or?
Some equipment and tools to repair the equipment, I mean, there's going to be an excavator and a wheel loader, there's going to be some other mechanics tools to work on stuff as we need to, and potentially, if we begin bagging the biochar, we can get it to a right product that can be bagged or stored in super sacks, we put it in there and be nice and dry.
What is the main way you're going to get product out of that area, because I'm still concerned that that's a very choked off area, because you have one way in and one way out, underneath that tunnel and over that small bridge, are you bringing in fifty-three foot trucks to take it out, are you bringing in?
No, it's going to be small trucks, it's going to mostly be small dump trucks, size of UPS trucks and smaller, we don't want the volume, and I don't want the volume for those big tractor trailers coming in and out, that's not the kind of operation we're running, you know, this is.
You estimated at the ZHB, maybe ten or maybe just north of ten trips a day, approximately, about with the, like, the box or the UPS sized trucks?
Correct, correct, you know, some of them will be my trucks going in there, but again, we're not looking for wood chips, and that's what these mulch guys do, they run those huge trucks and, you know, it's non-stop, and, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't need that, we don't want that.
Those bringing the wood surplus in for you to utilize, are going to be smaller dump trucks, lines great?
Well, it's mostly small landscape contractors, even large contractors, they're not using big tractor trailers, they're bringing in typical smaller trucks, it's the same trucks you see pulling up to people's houses and doing work.
Like dump trailers, they call them?
Dump trailers, walking floor trailers, yeah, I don't, I don't know many contractors that have them.
How, how's the catering feel with you bringing all this stuff through there, and all the other joys that'll come with it, critters that'll be attached and all that?
I mean, I'm improving the property right now, there's trash that ends up there all the time, people walking through there, some homeless people hanging out back there, so I'm definitely improving the property, I don't know as much as, I don't think it's going to bring, when you say critters like rodents and stuff, I mean, it's, we're going to be there, it's going to be a clean operation and.
Well, it's going to be old wood that some animals live in.
Well, there's plenty there now, you know, with the woods, but we're going to keep an eye out for them and try to do any kind of control we need to do, if we need exterminator, an exterminator will do that.
Yeah, but you want to bring, I mean, you want to put an incinerator next to, I mean, a lot of woods, with not a lot of access to it, I mean, right now, right under thirteen, I mean, if you look after thirteen, how much that's woods and how much is access to it? What, are they going to shut down Route one, the fire trucks to shoot off, you know what, I mean, I'm just saying, there, there's, there's a lot behind us.
Yeah, it's really not an incinerator, and it's a lot smaller scale, I mean, it's the size of a thirty-yard dumpster, it's not huge, and with that curtain blowing the fire down, the flames, it's not going to get out of the box, and if it were to get out of the box, I mean, it's, where's it going to go, you know, we're not going to have the box right next to raw material that could possibly ignite, so.
There is the mulch place right across My Lane, I'd be worried about ash, hot ash or whatever getting into if that were to fail or anything gets out of the box, could ignite a very large fire over there.
Well, yeah, I mean, if that's the case, but I, I highly doubt that ash would actually fly over there, I mean, this wind curtain is blowing down, preventing ash from coming out, preventing smoke from coming out, so.
I think what Jesse's trying to say is that, which happens a lot, is Fay Garrett and Britton have mulch fires, and it travels in the air, and what he's saying, it'll come over to your property, so, sorry, but yeah, but that's, I mean, I've seen, been there, done it, we set up on Route one, we shoot fire from the fire trucks, the ladders, and a deluge guns over to Fay Garrett, and depending on the wind direction, it's going to run that way, my concern, just to go back to my other comment, I don't think there's enough access there, I'm not sure if you talked to Rich, the Fire Marshal, about that, or he's more worried about fire protection systems, but I would highly recommend you get with all three fire chiefs in the town. chiefs in the township and you talk about a way to get back there. Because with Fay Garrett and Britton, you have multiple areas to get to. If you're going to set up here, you have 13, the exit ramp of 13, and that's about it. Because you're not, you're not running multiple fire trucks. If there is an issue on your property, they're going to use ladders, what they call storkels, it's not going to be, you don't need engines in there, you're going to need larger trucks to put things out there. So I would work whatever you need to do to maybe possibly look into a second or third egress area off Route 1, off through the Conrail or somewhere, but that's just my worry to get in there because if, God forbid, we're not saying it's likely, if something happens to something, that somebody drops off, we see fire and dump, dump trucks and everything all the time, gets dumped off, they put it there, not your process, but all the product is going to be there.
No, I understand.
I'd recommend looking into something in that situation. And my last comment I had is, there's no long-term goal to prepackage this and sell prepackaged items out of there, correct? You're not going to package it up like you see biochar at Home Depot?
No, no, no. If anything, it'll be in those super sacks.
The big ones, okay.
Correct, correct. We're not going to do any retail operation or anything like that, no. But back to your previous comment, I understand what you're saying completely. When I spoke to Rich and he didn't seem to have a problem with the egress, he was just more concerned with you have a fire, what are we going to do? So water was his main concern and like I said, a well, storage tank and multiple hydrants. So it's not going to be like fire trucks show up, they can get there, but there's no water. Water is the main issue here and we're definitely going to work on that to have enough volume to put out, you know, a fire. If there is a fire, it's typically not going to be, it's not going to be a mulch fire where you're chasing it for hours.
Agreed.
And Mr. Haney, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if, in terms of suggestion, obviously we don't, it doesn't matter what the project is, but any project that's dealing with materials, we don't want to, nobody wants to create an unsafe condition. So if it's something where, whether it's to the planning commission or piece of paper from the supervisors, if it's something that we can get confirmation of from the fire department in advance, that they're comfortable from an EMS access standpoint, that's certainly something that we're, you know, we're willing to procure. Again, I don't know if it's something that the planning commission would want to see in advance of a positive recommendation or not, but it's something that I think we could work on, on getting as a condition.
I would just talk to Chief Hilbert and just have them, they're more familiar with their trucks getting there. Just work with the local fire departments to see, set up a pre-plan before you decide to build anything on there, where you're going to set up your water plans. Just recommend talking to the local fire department, where you want to put the yard hydrants. If you do it, if you do a fire suppression tank, where that's going to go? If you do a well, what type of pumps in there?
I just want to add that in terms of our relationship to Britton, the closest Britton operations come to us is 4,950 feet away, so almost a mile.
Fay Garrett is Britton.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Fay Garrett's Britton. That's right next door.
The, the trucks coming in and out of there, they're more like the tree service companies with the large, large wood coming through, is that what you're going to be taking?
Correct.
So, you know, the bucket trucks come through the center of the tunnel, right? They got to drive through the center?
Correct.
Go drop trips off? So you're going to have the logging, the logging trucks that they have, they pick up the logs and that's what you guys are going to be doing?
Correct.
And the employees you're going to have working doing this, are there any kind of training for these guys or is there any kind of training they're going to go through? Well, we're going to train them, I mean, this is new to myself as well, but you know, the woodworking and chainsaw operation and disposal we've been dealing with, I used to make mulch in the past, so I know all about the mulch end of it and material processing, you know, operating this, it's going to be new to, new to myself as well, but we're going to train guys to make sure they're not just going, I'm not going to send them out there and say, all right, guys, have fun, you know.
And these buckets seem mobile, so if you find a better position for them, you can move them, it looks like?
They're, they're mobile, yeah. So in other parts of the, of the country, they actually move them around from site to site, so I'm going to leave it there, but if I had to move it.
Got you, if you had to move it better.
The other comment I would make is, we are working on buffering and adding some landscaping between this property and the commercial property. I don't have that measured, but I think we're a couple hundred square feet away from where the use is proposed here as to the catering.
But I think you made the comment earlier, your client owns that property anyway, sir. Any other, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I don't have any questions for Mr. Donardo, I have questions for the engineer, Michael.
Yeah, no, I've been down there.
I'm with the train guys and I'll be there personally and, you know, make sure everything runs right and I'll even welcome the fire marshal to come out and watch us, you know, initially.
How many of these plants are, do you know that they have?
In PA, there's two, but there are, you know, north of here, about an hour and a half north of here, more rural areas, so there actually was one very similar to this in Jamison a few years back, a very large mulch manufacturer had it, Sparks Industries, they decided to get rid of it. They were used to mulch grinding, whereas a lot of volume, a lot of material, this thing's slow. They didn't want to sit around and watch this thing burn wood and create char, so they ended up getting rid of it for that reason. And they just, they just do a lot of grinding.
I got another one for you, Mr. Donardo, I'm sorry. Where do you plan on accepting the materials from? Like, is it just Pennsylvania? Are we worried about bringing invasive bugs or anything like that from other states?
Just the local, local area.
So nothing from Jersey, New York, Delaware, anything like that?
I mean, if somebody comes in and I don't know that, but we're not going to advertise or anything, I mean, just, there's enough contractors in lower bucks that will come.
It's just landscaping, no other materials, correct?
Correct. We don't want construction debris, we don't want, we don't even want pallets. I mean, a pallet might show up here or there, but pallets, there's wood, there's, there's metal and nails and then I have to screen that metal out, so I don't want to, I don't want farm matter, farm materials in that byproduct because then I can't do anything with it. Then I'm going to the landfill to get rid of it. So we're trying to utilize everything we produce.
Got it. Thank you, sir. It's mainly tree, tree service companies that come back there, right? They dump chips and?
Not chips, again, we don't want the chips because chips don't burn as well.
But no, the chips can go to, over to.
Chips can go to the right.
Yep, and you guys will be to the left.
You know, this is really ideal for stumps because stumps have roots, have some rocks in there, have some dirt, and nobody wants to run that through a big grinder because it's pretty abrasive. So we'll clean it up, separate it and burn it up.
Does this facility have to be licensed by the DEP?
As far as I'm aware of, no, I'm not. There was actually a clean permit for the, for the air quality from this thing that was removed a few years back. I don't know if it's in that documents I gave you, but Airburners sent me the link that says the DEP doesn't require them to be permitted anymore all over the country.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, thanks for your time.
Thanks.
What's the situation with the stone on the railroad property driveway? The driveway that's actually on the railroad property, you have an agreement with the railroad?
You're referencing the fact that, the note that the driveway location is, doesn't seem to be 100% aligned with the actual location of the.
And actually on somebody else's property?
Physical driveway. We discussed that today and we're willing to relocate that to be within the bounds of the easement.
I would prefer to see the paving extend all the way down also so that there's not, and it'd be better for the catering hall so we're not kicking up dust and all that stuff too.
Okay.
And, and put it in easement, that'd be great.
Make a note.
Because I don't think you can adverse possess against the railroad.
We're not going to explore that as an option.
Any more questions or comments from the board before we go over the requested waivers?
All right. Okay. Yep. So take these, John and I will rotate through the waiver requests. We have a prelim final in tandem waiver request from 191-8. We have what's essentially referenced twice, although we can split them if you want, the waiver request with respect to curb installation at 191-36D and 191-37B, I believe, and I think that John can provide more context, I think that's to do with the sheet flow of the stormwater design as the basis for not wanting to install the curbing, if you want to highlight that.
So one part of that deals with curbing along the access drive and the access drive is, the easement for that's 25 feet, so if we were to provide curbing, it reduces that driveway width by the width of the two curbs. So we elected there to omit the curbing. And then in the area of the parking lot, the, in the area of the parking lot, the plan is to sheet the runoff across a parking lot into a drywall that will be located along the edge. So we admitted the curbing in the parking lot to allow that sheet flow to occur.
What, what is the width of the proposed driveway?
25 feet.
We have a waiver request with respect to the location of the driveway vis a vis the property line because of the access point, we're not able to comply with that at 191-36D. We are asking for a waiver from 191-39G with respect to sidewalk installation, given the location of this property and the lack of sidewalks in the vicinity. We have 191-48, which is street trees. We, again, in this instance, we don't ensure that street trees are warranted, given the location of this property and the proximity to Route 1 and Route 13 and the vegetation that we're adding versus the adjacent property line. There's also a note in here regarding the, right, the significant vegetation that will be remaining.
Our property's behind that, so that, that's what we're currently looking at along the street frontage.
Then we have 191-521B4B2, and that's with respect to woodlands. And John can highlight this, my understanding is, well, two things, my understanding is one, the condition of a lot of the woodlands on site are not, you know, pristine, matured woodlands, we have to remove woodlands to develop this property in any meaningful way. And I think the access point is really where we have to remove it. So again, any property that's being developed here that takes access through the adjoining property is going to have to remove the woodlands, but.
Correct. Correct. The, the majority of the woodlands is located right in this area. And as Mike said, it's mostly small stuff, invasive species, a lot of briars and stuff, it's not nice, mature woods. There is a little bit along the periphery of the site, but the vast majority of the woodlands is right here. And in order to even access the site, unfortunately, it's just a unfortunate location for the woodlands.
And then we have a waiver request with respect to existing features at 191-78C2, where we are requesting permission to submit an aerial and have that suffice in lieu of a full existing features plan. Oh, sorry, we have one, one more, planning beds. We are installing as part of the development, there are planning beds, they're not raised, so we have that listed as, or I guess described as basically a partial waiver request.
Mike, would, one of the waivers you were asking for was, was it 191-521B2? Was that one of them? Wetlands?
Correct, that, that was the woodland disturbance.
Yeah, that was, yes, we're, that's the, the area that John was just discussing regarding the woodlands and the proximity of the woodlands to the access point that we'd have to remove.
This deals with wetlands?
In, no, so we've worked to confirm that there are no wetlands, the property, so that's not a waiver that's being sought. And I think that's been removed from the June 18th review letter.
Is there going to be any signage added because just looking at the Google Maps now, if they miss that entrance, they're going to go right into Fay Garrett slash whatever, Victory Gardens, whatever it is now. It's pretty close. And there's only the Small Falls sign now. I would just make sure it's a pretty quick, when you come through that tunnel, it's a quick turn, so just make sure.
I, I don't think, candidly, I don't think we discussed that component of it yet.
I just don't want to disturb Fay Garrett if we get all these landscaping trucks missing the turn and going into their property.
But both of those businesses, the catering hall and Garrett, Victory, both have signs out in front of the tunnel directing them where they go.
Yeah, I'm just, it's all good, I'm just asking the question because it's just, you mean, it's a small, your road is very small to go across. The other question I have too, you're not going to operate the same time that Hall has?
Affairs, correct.
Affairs, correct, okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
My only other comment is, if, if the fact, if I heard your presentation correctly, you plan to put a trailer there, work trailer there?
Office trailer, yes.
So I would recommend that the septic system be put in and connected to the office trailer in the phase, first phase, not the second phase.
Okay. We can do that, right, John?
One other question, it's, in the, on the plans, it shows a sewage pumping station for the catering hall, where does that pump to?
So that's a convoluted thing. It actually pumps down My Lane, it crosses through the tunnel, and then it actually gets pumped, I believe, over to Trenton, believe it or not, and it's treated in New Jersey because it's owned and operated by the railroad company.
It goes into railroad's property?
Yeah. Yeah, it's very convoluted. We tried tracing it down and it's hard to get any records or anything.
And there was no, did you investigate the thought of possibly increasing the size of the septic system or the septic pump and pumping the sewage in there rather than putting a septic?
We did, so there's an existing agreement between the banquet hall and Conrail, and my understanding, I was not part of it, but I'm trying to, it took years and years to get that agreement and it'll take more years and years to get a revised agreement.
All right, thank you. Did you say it goes through the tunnel?
I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, my understanding is it goes through the tunnel. Yeah, under or through, I'm not sure exactly where it's located in the tunnel, but I saw a, what's called a single line diagram and it crosses, it crosses through the tunnel. I don't know if it's underground tunnel or hung from the ceiling or something like that, or it might go through the banquet.
Federal peril with it, yeah, the concrete. You didn't go out there and chase it, trace the line yourself?
No, I did not.
Did we have a traffic engineering letter?
We don't receive those.
You don't receive those?
We don't, we don't have a traffic letter to the best of my knowledge.
Yeah.
Yeah, Richie said for the building, it wasn't for the hydrants.
Seems like it's all will complies and I would note that it references Mr. Haney's comment regarding procuring a, a letter regarding EMS availability, which we're agreeable to. And again, I, just to clarify for the record, if there's a motion, the, we'll modify septic to installation of phase one and we will relocate the access to be within the easement and then work to extend that, the length as well.
Great.
All right, with that, I'll undertake a motion.
I will make a motion to recommend preliminary final approval with the recommended waivers for the following. 191-36D, 191-37B, 191-37G, 191-39G, 191-48, 191-52 dot 1 dot B4B2, and a partial waiver for 191-78C2. The applicant will provide necessary information to, for the engineer. And with the recommendation as per the testimony that the applicant will move the installation of the septic system to phase one and extend the driveway in the existing easement down to the existing entrance. And the applicant will comply with the remaining comments from the Jones Engineer Letter of June 18th, I believe it is, and they will comply with the requirements, or the comments from the Remington Vernick Traffic Engineering dated March 202024 letter, with the exception of the waivers that we've recommended. dated March 202024 letter, with the exception of the waivers that we've recommended.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Benny Polabord?
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
No.
I'm a yes, Mr. Haney?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good night.
All right, we'll go to item number two, the minutes for May 28th, 2024. Any comments for the minutes, or should we accept them as printed?
I make a motion to accept those printed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Still moved. Have a good night, everyone.